The hour being seven o'clock, call to order. Riverside Brookfield District 208 Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, could you take the roll, please?
Mr. Kirkland?
Here.
Yes, sir. Ms. Wester?
Here.
Ms. Towner?
Here.
Mr. Senor.
Here.
Mr. Welch?
Here.
Here. Dr. Freitas, we have recognitions this evening.
We do. The first recognition, RBHS has been going gold this month by raising awareness for pediatric cancer and working with Cal's Angels, a local non-for-profit cancer foundation that specializes in granting wishes, raising awareness, and funding research to helping students fight cancer. On behalf of Riverside Brookfield High School District 208, we would like to thank everyone who contributed to the Cal's Angel Initiative by going gold or making a financial contribution. And a special thanks goes to Senior Veronica Hunt and Assistant Principal of Athletics, Brendan Curtin, for coordinating this event. I would also like to thank all the students and staff for purchasing the shirts, purchasing the wristbands, and the RBHS Girl Swim Team for fundraising as well. As a result of everyone's effort, RBHS will proudly present Cal's Angel with a check in the amount of $3,400.
Thank you, Veronica. Come on up.
Nice job, Veronica.
We're so proud of you, Veronica. Thank you for all you've done. Okay, you've done a great job. Quick, return.
Congratulations. That's a great organization.
Nice job, Veronica.
Next recognition are the National Merit Commended Students. Three of RB's own have been named commended students in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 34,000 commended students through the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2023 competition for the National Merit Awards, commended students placed amount in the top of 50,000 scores of more than 1.5 million students who entered in the 2023 competition by taking the 2021 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. When I name you, please come up here. I would like to congratulate Isabella Morrissey. Joshua Nelson and Samuel Royer cannot be here today as they have prior commitment. But congratulations, Isabella. Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Dr. Freitas, what was the names of the two that, I think, with applause, just so their parents could hear their?
Joshua Nelson and Samuel Royer.
Okay.
You can say that. That's quite an accomplishment, so congratulations to all three of our students. Thank you.
Congratulations, Isabella.
Do we have any visitor statements this evening? Looking around. Moving on to report, Student Association Report. Good evening.
Hi, it's nice to see you all again. We just wanted to say thank you for having us tonight. We were presenting at these board meetings. Also, sorry for Olivia's outfits. We're going straight to practice right after this. My name is Allo Prado, and I'm the president of the Student Association EXACT Board this year. At RB, I am a captain of the Poms team. I'm involved in Best Buddies, NHS, Jazz Band, and just the dance department.
My name is Emily Hernandez. I am the student spokesperson. At RB, I'm involved in ISA and then ASC and Girl Up are the other clubs that I really enjoy.
Hi, I'm Coley Alexander. I'm the treasurer of the EXACT Board. I'm also on Versi Poms. I'm the co-president of French Club, NHS, and then all the dance at RB as well.
Hi, I'm Olivia Glave. I'm the secretary of the EXACT Board in addition to SA. I am the co-president of Best Buddies, head captain of the Poms team. I'm a member of the Spanish Club National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and all dance stuff here.
So the dance team took over SA.
Yeah. Pretty good. Our vice president is Sam Royer, but he can't be here tonight due to the soccer game.
And our director of communications, Annabella Ventura McKinney, cannot be here tonight either. She's not feeling well, so she's not able to make it. So first thing is freshman orientation. We had a really, really good success. A vast majority of the new freshmen came. It was, I don't know, like 70% of them. We started outside and then broke them off into groups as they entered. We had a lot of student leaders, so a lot of like the junior class and the senior class this year were able to come and help and guide students around. It was like four to six leaders per group, and we had like 15 groups. So we had a really good turnout for student leaders. It started with, well, we split them off into groups, and then like half of them went on a 30-minute tour, and half of them went into a classroom, and they kind of just answered questions in those classrooms, and then they switched and were released shortly after that. And it was just really, really good success.
Student Association had a great start to the school year. Each month, we do a spirit competition between all of our six-hour classes, and luckily, we were able to do that our first week of school, which really just brought some well-needed school spirit right at the beginning of the year. And in addition to that, we had our freshman class officer elections. We had 12 freshmen run for positions, and the six that got selected are a great group of students.
Yeah, and then this past Saturday, we had our homecoming, which our theme was Dancing Through the Decades, and that was one of the students in SA's idea. And then we all voted on it, and that was the one that won. So along with that, then we created a spirit weeks to go with it. So we did like, we started with the 50s on Mondays, and like we had like people dressed like they were from the 50s, and then all throughout the week, you know, the decades would increase until Friday was crazy blue and white, which was also like present day. So that was really fun, and we had a lot of participation. We were posting it on the SA Instagram on the stories, and we also had a lot of support from other RB pages. In addition to that, we did our annual penny pinch. And this year, we were raising money in honor of Lizzie Mooney. And all the money we raised, which was $1,100, which was incredible, is going to the PolyBio Research Foundation, and that is a foundation that is spending like time and money researching or long COVID, which has a lot of the same symptoms of ME. It's a disease that you can get after having COVID that like affects your body permanently. So that money is going to go help not only to patients with ME, but it's also going to help with long COVID, which is a new thing that the pandemic has brought up.
Who won the penny pinch?
It's the seniors did.
Okay.
So it was a tight race. It was, we were in the lead, and then the freshman actually came in the lead, which never happens, but then the seniors were able to pull through at the end, and yeah, it was a big deal for us. We were very excited about that. In addition to that, we also had our pep rally, which we had a lot of staff involvement, which was really awesome. A lot of the kids thoroughly enjoyed that, and it was really fun to see the teachers participating. We, this year, kind of a newer thing, we did Bulldog Royalty. So how it worked was the senior class nominated 10 people to create like homecoming court, and then the whole school got to vote on their top two, and those were our Bulldog Royalty. So it was very fun. And then the dance in general was, we did it outside again because we just thought that last year when we did it because of COVID, it worked really, really well. It works for a lot more people because it allows for more people to be able to attend the dance because you don't really like, if you don't want to be 100% part of like the big dancing group, then you can go along the field. And we actually had like hundreds of students like dancing, but also many, many on the field, like being able to take in homecoming, but from a space that they were more comfortable with. So we were really happy with how the outside turned out, and we had the option to bring it inside if weather was bad, but luckily, we had very nice weather and having it outside allowed for a lot more people to come and really enjoy it and find the right space for themselves. So yeah, that was homecoming.
Okay, so next, we're in the works of planning our first blood drive of the year, which will be on November 1st, which we're very excited about. And also Cards to the Troops, which we do every year. We have students from SA. We also have like tables outside where we can have all students kind of write Cards to Troops, and we send those out. And we are also in the works of planning a monthly Spirit Week, Start Your Spirit Day, and we had students from SA vote on some days that they were very excited about. And yeah.
Okay, you guys are off to a great start. Any questions? Comments?
Sounds very busy in the scheduling.
Outstanding work, team.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great call.
Yes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take my, let them leave. Give me a second here. I'm going to take my president's report and turn it over to Vice President Ramona Towner.
It is with mixed emotions this evening that I announce my resignation from the RBHS School Board effective the end of the month, October 1st. I'd just like to take this time to thank a few people and just say a few words about my board experience. I want to thank Michael Towner for always being supportive and being my campaign manager, encouraging me to run in the first place. My children as well. I hope that they see that their parents believe in public service and will continue that in their adult lives once they're settled in their careers and what life has for them. I said I wasn't going to cry.
You won't.
I want to thank my fellow board members, past and present, for always being supportive, even though maybe we didn't always agree. We were civil, and we came to common ground. I've enjoyed the work immensely. That's what makes this so hard. It wasn't always easy, especially during COVID. But I believe that I put the rules of board governance and what was best for kids first always, and those things, I think, helped me be a successful board member and gain that common ground with my other board members. There are so many, so, so many, so many great things about RB. I'm proud to have sent both of my children here, and they are leading successful lives, I think, because of their time at RB. Again, I'm going to miss it. We've done outstanding work as a board since 2017. I know that will continue. We have an outstanding faculty. They are top-notch. They also equally put kids first always. An outstanding administration. I appreciate the support of Dr. Freitas, Dr. Sotana, Dr. Skinkis, and the whole administrative team. And finally, I have really enjoyed serving my community. So thank you for having put me here for the last five and a half years, and I will miss the work. That's it.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, and we do have a resolution to read, but everyone wanted to make comments first. So do you want to start on this end, or?
Well, just want to thank Ramona for everything since I first began here. You know, you welcomed me and been a, somebody, you know, made yourself available, you know, for any questions. Just have the utmost respect and appreciation for you. And to your dedication to the kids is true. It's unparalleled. And so, you know, you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Mike?
I want to say that, Ms. Towner, you're one of the hardest-working board members that I've come across. I thank you for helping me with my IT problems and getting my emails to sync, because you got to remember when I started my job, it was before computers. Seriously, she's one of the hardest board members that I've worked with. I wish her well in her future, and if there's anything you can think of that you need from me, either personally or professionally, let me know.
I asked you last time about your employer, but you...
Yes. My question is certain things I can't do for you. The offer's always there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Oh, Ramona, it's been a great, you know, session and a plus. We didn't get to the whole second one. And it's not about always agreeing, but it's about that passion that you bring. It's about the vision that you brought and the energy and that willingness to fight and go against all odds. So I know that that's still in you somewhere. Somebody else is going to get it, and it's going to be our loss.
Thank you, neighbor. I will miss seeing you almost daily. I'll miss the little blue car.
That hasn't been around too long. You might speed by regularly. Thank you, Ramona. I appreciate your sentiments, obviously touch at the heart of why we're here and what you want to pass on to your own children, but also what you've been standing for and your passion shows through with every this pound of our passionate remark that you make. So thank you for being a part of this, and certainly your service is appreciated. So positive luck and all new ventures, and enjoy.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you.
So I think my colleagues said it very well. I'm going to read the commendation resolution. Commendation Resolution from Ramona Towner. Whereas Ramona Towner served as a member of the Board of Education of the Riverside Brookfield Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, from April 27 to October 2022. And whereas she gave conscientiously and generously of her time and energies during that time. Whereas she served with dedication and great distinction and gave outstanding service to the faculty, staff, administration, students, and community. Now therefore, be resolved by this Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, that this expression of esteem and appreciation of Ramona Towner and the great benefits which have accrued to the school by reason of her unselfish service be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting of said board and a signed copy of this resolution be presented to Ramona Towner and the Board of Education and witness whereof do hereunto affix our signatures and seal at Riverside, Illinois this 27th day of September 2022.
Second.
The second from Mr. Van Horst. You just pass it down here. We'll do it.
Oh, thank you.
You will be missed. Will be very much missed.
Okay, hold it up and face the camera.
Okay, sorry.
You have him with my head.
Yeah, yeah.
Unposed pictures are bad.
Unposed pictures are never very flattering.
Thank you.
Send the warning.
You have my number. You want some, please.
Ramona's your next time. Mary, did I need to sign, had the board sign this after the meeting? Okay.
Oh, you're giving it to me. I thought it was under there.
But we do have to finish the vote, right?
We do.
Wait a second.
It's been handed over. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed to provide this resolution to Ms. Towner? I don't think so. But thank you for the reminder, Ms. Rusk. I appreciate it. Otherwise, we'd have to take the plaque back. Right?
Thank you all very much. I appreciate all of your kind words, and again, I'm going to miss it.
With regards to the vacancy that will be created by Ms. Towner's departure on October 1st, we will be posting information about an application process to occur over the next couple of weeks. We'll have something on our website tomorrow, I would assume.
Close of business tomorrow.
Tomorrow by the end of the week. So we would ask that members of the community look at that application. It is for the, not for the remainder of her term, but it will be through the remainder of the second year of the term because it does fall under statutorily, that position will be open as part of the election next year now.
So we'll have two, four, four-year terms and one two-year term.
Correct.
And that'll be in the form of a press release, or?
We have a press release that will be going out to the local media as well as be affixed to the webpage so that if someone wanted that information, they can apply online.
And it's a Google form, kind of in honor of Mona. It's a Google form for people to apply.
Thank you.
Are we going to talk about the form during our meeting?
Well, we can discuss the process of replacing a board member during closed session.
Okay, we do from, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. And I just wanted to talk about the actual form.
Sure. No, I think, my preference, it's allowable under closed session. I did share a copy of an application form we had used previously. We should have that discussion. Okay. Nothing has been posted at this point. Okay. On that note, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
General District Update. First and foremost, pair evaluation. So this is just reporting out to the board. This was a new initiative that was developed during the negotiation process of the new collective bargaining agreement. We have 63 teachers participating in the pair evaluation model, which is 21 cohorts of three teachers and an administrator. And this is fantastic for a first-year initiative. We had kickoff breakfast, and an orientation meeting was held on Thursday, September 15. The staff members, the breakfast was well-received. Ms. Lindquist did an excellent job presenting the expectations, resources, and additional supports that will be made available throughout the year to ensure we have success in this first year. The staff and administration are very excited about this initiative. And again, it's an opportunity for teachers to be a part of co-evaluating their fellow teachers in their cohort with the administration. I think this is a big step for not only improving instruction at RB because you'll have teachers working with teachers and growing from other teachers' practices and discussing, but also I think it's going to help the administration because now you're getting to see it from the lens of a teacher, maybe from a different content area, or how the teachers are viewing when they're preparing classes or their lessons. And so this is really exciting to see, and we're going to make sure we give as much support as they need to the 63 teachers participating in this so that we have some success with that in this first year. The Culture and Operations Committee, another joint committee established under the new collective bargaining agreement met this month to discuss ideas related to the district calendar for next school year, staff recognition ideas, and parent-teacher conferences, which will be virtual this year based on all the positive feedback we received for the last two years. So Dr. Freitas and his team will be posting how you schedule your appointments, but the virtual parent-teacher conferences are October 20. The placement exam for the class of 2027 is on Saturday, October 29th at 8:00 a.m. District Smart Goals in regards to the communication goal, the communication survey. That was our smart goal for this year for our communication and public feedback and input. The district has accepted a proposal to work with school perceptions on drafting a communication survey that will go out to all stakeholders. This survey will be available digitally and in hard copy format for residents who do not have access to the district website. A weekly update, shared a tentative timeline for the Board of Education. My goal is to try to have this survey out by the end of November so that we can gather the results and work with the company on desegregating the data before the first of the year. Superintendent Advisory Council's curriculum, no new updates. Facility Advisory Council, this advisory council will convene as soon as there's progress on the design and bid documents for the HVAC project scheduled to occur in the summer of 2023. The proposal for Bowman Consulting to commission the HVAC project was signed and submitted this week. Dr. Sotana will provide a little more information on that project in her report. Finance Advisory Council, no new updates as the budget was adopted at the last board meeting. Personnel Advisory, certified and non-certified salary reports for the last fiscal year are included in Dr. Sotana's report will be posted to the district website following the Board of Education meeting. No new updates on policy and no new updates on any purchase, sale, lease of land advisory council. And that's the superintendent's report for September 27.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on to Dr. Sotana's report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of August of 2022, which represents 17% of our fiscal year. Beginning on workbook page 7 is our monthly summary report. You can see the total operating revenue for the month was $402,893, with 57% coming from Evans-based funding, which is our state funding, 28% from registration and course fees, and 9% from local revenue. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,786,791, with 59% towards salary and benefits, 22% for purchased services, primarily LADI, which is our special education cooperative. We pay a majority of that bill at the front of the school year, and 11% for special education tuition. On the next page, you'll find the summary of revenue, which shows that the district had received 3.69% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is lower than this time last year at 5.11% and also significantly lower compared to a typical August due to the delay in property tax collection, which I'll talk about in a little bit. The next page is the summary of expenditures, which shows that the district has spent 20.6% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this is really tracking similar to this time last year. On the next page is the fund balances, and you'll see that the district will continue to deficit spend for at least the next four months. We're currently deficit spending now, but if you look on the next page, I provided for the board a summary of our cash flow analysis that the township treasurer has done for me, and they'll continue to do every month. This is an estimate because September, October, and November and December, those expenses and revenues are based off of last year, so they're estimates. But the important columns to look at are the surplus/deficits, and you'll see as we get to November, we run out of money in our education fund, and then in December, we won't have money to cover our debt service. And so next month, I'll be asking the board to make a transfer, a temporary transfer from our working cash. But the most important thing to look at on that page are the notes on the bottom. So in all, this isn't, again, this is an estimate, but the district will need to loan or use probably at least $5,450,507 from working cash fund until the district receives its property taxes, hopefully in late December. This will temporarily leave approximately $2,723, $804 in our working cash, so $2.7 million in working cash will be remaining until we get that property tax money in. And so this is really important because this is why it's important to have a fund balance, and certainly the surplus from last year's budget helped us as well. But this helps the district avoid having to go to a tax anticipation warrant or get out some other sort of loan that has a very high interest rate for the district. So I wanted to provide a board update on that, and I will continue to provide an update each month as well.
Kristen, I do have a question.
So if we do the transfer of 5.7, what's the relative merit of transferring all the working cash? Or we have to come back possibly? The latest that I'm hearing from the news media is that those tax bills will be out by the end of the year with a, perhaps a 1231 deadline. So can you just walk me through how you got to the 5.7?
Sure. So if you look at the education fund, which is the top line, you go all the way over to the December estimate, and that is roughly $2.9 million. And then you drop down to debt service, and that is, we're short in that account in December by $2.34 million. And then in our Fund 50 and 51, that's really a combined fund, social security, we're short in December $203,000. And again, these are estimates. Like, I know we're not getting as much October revenue because we're not getting SR3 money because we received a lot of that last year. So it'll likely be more, so we'll be updating and monitoring this. We will, I will likely be making a recommendation to transfer a little more than what we need in the education fund. We'll know the exact amount in debt service that we need to.
Yeah, and I guess that's my question. What's the risk of moving everything over to a holiday in January?
I mean, we can. I don't know. I'll certainly provide a cushion. I don't know if we'll need to move everything. And then when the property tax comes in, you just immediately pay back the working cash account. So we will certainly transfer probably more than we need. I don't know if we need to transfer all of it.
Well, I think the reason she was asking that if they delay the tax bills to December 31st, we're going to need, we don't have this going out to January, so we will have one more month of January bills that we most likely will need to borrow and pay.
But that remainder won't get us what we need, but it gets us partially there.
We have one meeting in December?
We do.
That meeting, we can decide if that's enough or not. We should know when the county...
So possibly move it a second. So possibly move it a second, pass or make a second move?
Yeah, we have to.
Part of the problem.
Yeah, and there's no harm in that. She was asking what the thought for us.
Part of the problem right now is we're, we haven't really had a normal month where we're tracking expenses yet. And we have a new contract, and so that amount is a little different, too. And so we're trying, like, September will be a more normal month. In July and August, we're paying one-time expensive bills like ARAMAR or LADI, things of that nature. So it levels off after that, and we'll really, we'll have a set number as to what we typically pay in salary and benefits, which is our largest expense.
And we have not received any type of escrow payments either because those tax bills?
No, because the tax bills have not harmed us.
The only tax we would collect is anything in arrears.
Yes.
Which would be small.
Pennies, yes. And then we do collect CP, PRT, but that's not property tax.
Does escrow move pretty quickly, though, once the bills are released? Does that?
That's a good question. The Township Treasurer believes that we will not, we will definitely need to cover a bond transfer because we won't receive that escrow money probably until the end of December.
You're talking mortgage escrow? Well, they're pretty in tune to that, and they make the transfer on the day. So they're going to hold the money till the last.
I wouldn't suggest they pay it beforehand.
You know, people will pay their own bills like myself, might. But those mortgage companies, you know, I reviewed a lot of mortgage documents, and it's the day as due and not before.
Fair point.
Do we need to look at the low-interest loan debt that the county is offering?
The school district does not qualify for that.
And can you address, like, transferring money from one fund to another that's not the working cash fund?
Yes, you can transfer, you can transfer among operating funds. So operating funds are ten, twenty, and forty. So our ed fund, our operations and maintenance fund, and our transportation funds.
So twenty, twenty and forty have money if we get in trouble? We don't have to go to the outside?
So we use twenty, forty, and then the remaining working cash if we had to do it and get it for January?
Yeah. Like she said, she's going to get this monthly, and we've got to keep a sharp eye. The problem is, we'll only have one meeting in December. And should we get into a sticky wicket, the president could call a meeting if we had to do something crazy like that.
Well, I would think, you know, thinking out loud, but again, we'll talk again in October or November. But if we're approaching the Friday when the board packet goes out for the second week of December and we don't have
the bills haven't tracked yet, yeah.
I think we do it to be safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff, there's no harm in doing it, because like you said, as soon as the property tax come in, it immediately repays the loans that you took from the other funds.
So obviously something to stay.
The working cash transfer that you'll be recommending the board approve via motion would be approximately when?
I'm going to try to get some of that language in front of the board for the first read in October, but we likely will not need to take action until the second board meeting in October at the October Cal.
Okay. So we've done this in the past. It's really not a controversial motion. It's you're putting money from your savings account into your checking account to pay your bills. And she's going to give us a first read if you have questions at that point. Otherwise, I would assume we'll just pass it on the next round. That'll take care of us until, you know, then we'll look again in November, right?
So is there any issue? It sounds like no, but is there any issue with this process being cumbersome, doing it twice? Or is it something that is not a big deal if we end up having to do it twice versus doing one?
It's not a big deal at all to do it twice. We need to.
It's a low-call motion, and then the business office talks to the people over at Proviso, and they transfer the money.
Moving on in the report, just for your information, as always, I've provided a statement of revenues and expenditures for the month of August for our board accounts as well as our student activity accounts. Additionally, tonight, I've provided the board with our annual certified staff compensation report and non-certified staff compensation report. The state requires these annual reports be posted to the district website, and so we've provided those reports for you tonight as well. Next, on Board Book Page thirty-two, I provided the board with a transfer in enrollment report. This is something that we provide on an annual basis. This is a follow-up from the enrollment projections that I provide to the board in November. So as you can see, all the way to the right, we had seventy-seven students transfer in. Nine of those students have IEPs. We had thirty-four students transfer out, conveniently nine of which also had IEPs. It's not a typo. And so as a result, we had a net gain of forty-three students from our transfers. There was a question submitted about the specifics of those students, and we know that four of them already lived in district and were transferring from a private school. So as a result, the September enrollment, total enrollment is one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three students. Of those students, twenty-four students are outplaced. They attend, they're in special education and attend school in a different location. And twenty students are in transition program. So those are the students that are eighteen to twenty-two in our special education program. And so our in-house enrollment that we need to staff for FTEs is one thousand, six hundred and forty-nine students. In comparison, in November of last year, I projected that number to be one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine students.
Look at you.
So we have a difference of ten students there from our prediction.
I'm impressed by how close you get on that prediction. It really is remarkable.
And then you can look, we had projections for our overall enrollment, which was one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. And for our total enrollment, we have nineteen less students. There was also a question submitted about whether or not we still anticipate this being the peak enrollment year. I do think that's the case, but we're currently in the process of gathering updated numbers from all of our feeder schools and schools in the area, and so that will be shared out in November. But I do believe that that's probably going to be the case.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I provided the board with a preliminary update on our SMART goal that pertains to my department, which was to conduct an analysis of budget expenditures to ensure that we are committing resources to programs that directly affect student outcomes while also ensuring that our expenditures are at or below the board-approved budget level. So that goal was finalized after we did a lot of the budget process already. And so this is just a preliminary list. It's not a comprehensive list at this point. I need to go through in more detail. It'll be much easier next year when we know, when I know going into the budget process to make this list as we go. So I just wanted to provide the board currently with a list of things that we have added that have had a financial impact. So peer evaluation, Dr. St. Cassardi talked about blended learning. We've set aside money for professional development, classroom furniture, and resources needed for instructional practices. We've set aside money for math and English reading interventions based upon STAR testing results. We've set aside money for Panorama, which will provide a social-emotional screener or assessment for all students, and then we'll be able to do more interventions based off of those results. Auditorium lighting, we're providing the theater program with new LED lighting in the auditorium. And the tech crew with an opportunity to work with updated equipment. I've already had a student come to me expressing their excitement and another student's disappointment because it won't be here this year. It'll likely be put into place in the summer. Student safety team, we're adding additional student safety personnel to assist with building security for after-school events. We've increased money for the music program to address more items this year in their five-year replacement plan for equipment and for instruments. And then library, we've been phasing in, changing out the seating in the library to provide more comfortable and flexible seating within the library. And the students are really excited about that, and we have one or two more big phases to go. So we're able to accelerate that as well.
What about the music uniforms as well? Are we keeping that, like, in the queue? Remember when we originally got the new uniforms? We said we didn't want to ever get into that place where we had to replace them all, but we were?
Yes, so we collect a course fee every year to also help offset that. We've been keeping track of that. And I believe it was a ten- or twelve-year replacement cycle, and we're not there yet. But yes, we are keeping track of that as well. So like I said, I know this is not a comprehensive list, and then, but I wanted to share it with the board, and then we'll work on creating some graphic and doing more of a detailed analysis in the future.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes. So before we move on from the numbers, I just want to take a quick minute. It's been one year ago since I've been on the board and assigned to the Finance Advisory Committee. And I'll tell you that the work that Dr. Smetano does is fast and across the board, behind the scenes. So one year ago, after the budget was passed, I came on board. But look at all the things we did together, and we're going to have to do again in the next cycle. Student projections you just talked about, which leads into staffing projections. Students pick their courses, more staffing and sectioning, classes and class size. All effects of the budget we did, okay? Then we have a tentative budget. And then state funding estimates are worked in her office. Real estate tax collections are worked in her office. Real estate refunds and a projection there. And then we get to the final budget, and we did that at the last meeting. So a couple of things that are coming up that we did last year, the audit. And we'll have to do the levy again, okay? We already talked about the working cash transfer, but just a quick word about the audit. Last year, if you recall, there was this shifting of money that came in in the first two months that had to be shifted back, and all of a sudden, the revenues look like this, right? Well, this particular year, there's not going to be a shifting into the other year because here we are, already have our August thirty-first numbers, which are the first two months of the year, and there's no big tax revenue that's going to be shifted back. So when the audit comes out, don't be surprised it's going to look wonky again. It's going to be the opposite of last year. But we already anticipate that, and I just want to bring that up for you. And, you know, we had to work through the contract. Thank you for everyone on the board and their part in doing the contract, both for the staff and the administration. And then every first meeting of the month, it's our job to approve the payment of the bills. And so it's our job to review those paid bills pages. And so, you know, it's just like that country music song. Sunrise, sunburn, sunset, repeat. But I don't have an analogy for the numbers, but it's exactly what we're going to do for the next year. And so as you spend time on the board, you'll become more and more familiar with these items, even though you may not be on the Finance Advisory Council. Did I say anything incorrect? Okay, so thank you for the time.
Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, moving on to Dr. Freitas. Thanks.
Good evening, all of the board members. You know, firstly, I just want to send out my thoughts and prayers to everyone who has family in the state of Florida. You know, I believe Hurricane Ian's are going to make land for the next twenty-four hours.
Some of us have family who came from Florida and now can't go home and are still here with us from Florida.
I know I have staff members that have family there. I have assistant principals that have family there. So again, my thoughts and prayers to everybody in the state of Florida, you know, make Ian go away, right? Stay in the Gulf of Mexico. With that said, my opening item's here. A quick update on the first SMART goal, and I'm paraphrasing, implementing a dashboard to support student success. So we have Panorama in place. About a third of our staff has been trained on Panorama. The other two-thirds will be trained by October thirteenth. And really, the work will really begin with that. Once we kind of wrap up the quarter, have all the academic data, all the survey, we'll be able to plan and move forward. More information to come about Panorama during the October committee of the whole meeting. Under the second goal, developing a district equity leadership team to continue work in equity, diversity, and inclusion. We have our Delt in place. Our district equity leadership team is comprised of over twenty-three staff members. We have district personnel, building personnel, administrators. We have teachers, paros, union reps. We have counselors, psychologists, and social workers. It's really a collaborative effort. With those twenty-three individuals, we created five strand teams that are going to look at systems of the school, student voice, community as agency, teaching and learning, and professional development. And they're going to create goals under each of those strands. We have five more meetings planned throughout the school year, and the goal is to create an action plan for implementation in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I'm really excited. We had our first meeting. We had the team in place. We're working on the goals, and we are moving forward. Coffee with the principal for parents is tomorrow at nine AM, right in this very room. Lunch with the principal for students is at the end of the week, September thirtieth, during lunches, right here in room two oh one. My race and equity meeting will be October twelfth from six thirty to eight PM. And under activities and athletics, the state series coming up for our boys and girls golf team. So good luck to both boys and girls. And I'm really excited that at RB, we officially have an RB bowling club. So I want to thank Mr. McGovern, the sponsor. So we got bowling's coming, right? And hopefully, we'll develop, and then in two years, if everything goes well, it'll be a full-on sport. But we're really excited to bring another opportunity for our students to get involved at RB. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas, for this very comprehensive report. Moving on to our student advisors.
Good evening, everyone. Multiple clubs have started back up since the last meeting. AST and math team, ones that I'm active in, are looking for more members. So the Association of Students for Tolerance holds Friday discussions in which we aim to reach common ground and listen to other people's perspectives on controversial topics. And on Wednesdays, we go to Cantata, which is the senior citizen center, and we spend time with the residents. And AST meets Fridays at seven thirty before school and Wednesdays after school in Mr. Beasley's room. And math team meets every Friday before school in Mr. Divas's room, and we practice math problems either individually or with groups. And then we compete against other high schools. And we're specifically looking for more sophomores and freshmen. So for any students listening, if these clubs interest you, I encourage you to join.
Good evening, everyone. These couple of weeks of school have been filled with amazing research opportunities. And I would personally have taken advantage of the college admission representative presentations. I have signed up to talk with many reps, and I believe that their input has been very helpful and influential when it comes to my personal application. These representatives have taken time out of their day to come speak with senior students here at RB, and I believe that every senior should attend these meetings to learn more about different universities and the college admissions process. These representatives are a great advocate for their college, and it's always a great idea to learn more about their entire college process as we are now in the application phase ourselves. With this, I would like to thank the Student Services Department for making appointments with the representatives. And I would also like to thank every college rep that came to visit so far because they have truly helped me and I'm sure other students with their college process as well.
Thank you both for your feedback. And if I ever don't see if you have comments on other items, I mean, you tend to just give a wave. If I didn't look up earlier, I apologize. Moving on to discussion information items, communication strategies. Is this you, Dr. Skinkis?
I'm assuming this was left on there just to, I think I covered it in my superintendent.
I believe so. Out-of-state field trips? There's no action there on the communication. Okay.
Correct. Out-of-state field trips, I believe we have this under first read, or is this the?
Yeah, it's a first read.
It's a first read.
If we're comfortable approving.
It was a first read, though, right? It was the three ski trips.
Right. Then they're looking for guidance if we're comfortable approving.
And the three ski trips are not overnight, correct?
They are overnight.
I read that correctly?
No, not overnight.
Mariana, these are under discussion. Should they be, if they're not under new business, can there be action taken? So it's a first read then, correct?
Yeah, I don't believe they can, so let's. And I had a question in the write-up. I thought these were ultimately canceled last year. Was I mistaken?
If I could respond, so I did receive some board comments. So, yeah, it's last year, the ski trips did not occur. We updated that. And then we also updated the cost of transportation for busing per student. So that has been updated on the forms.
Okay, thank you.
So these will be under new business at the next meeting for approval?
Yeah. New business at the next one.
And I just have one. So there's three. I don't recall us taking three in the last several years. I recall two before COVID. Is that an increase? Do we just?
Well, since I started here, I know we've done three. I mean, it's only my fourth year, and I know two and a half has been weird. So at least in the last four or five years, it's been three, December, January, February. So at least in the last four or five years, it's been three, December, January, February, we've done them.
Sometimes they don't go if it's the weather doesn't...
If the weather...
That's what's happened.
But these are not funded by, these are funded by the individuals.
Yeah, I just don't remember us approving three trips. I do remember two, but I don't remember three, okay.
Ski trips are one round trip, and wrestling is overnight.
They're day trips, right.
So, Mariana, these will be moved to new business for action at the first meeting of October.
Perfect, thank you. Additional discussion items. I had a couple of questions to bring up to the board. Does anyone else have any comments for additional discussion items? I think everyone's done a good job of presenting the SMART goal updates. And with leave of the body, I'd like to see that as an old business item where we get a regular update, not at every meeting, but on a quarterly basis with where those goals are as opposed to kind of having them peppered throughout. I think it'd be helpful to track against the goals that were adopted by the board, but I wanted to get people's feedback on that. Right now, we had one in Dr. Skinkis's presentation. We had a few in Dr. Smetana's. We had some in Dr. Freitas. I think it would...
I'm in agreement because I'm kind of jumping into what I'm seeing from Dr. Freitas and wanting to ask more questions. But I think I want to know more that I don't need to be privy to when it's actually taking place. So I agree that, you know, quarterly, although this might make more sense because otherwise I'm going to jump into questions that probably don't need to be asked at the time until there's more...
I mean, the information's out there, right? I think the institution's been providing it. Just from a strategy perspective, if we could organize it differently, include it as old business.
I'll run it under old business like life safety.
Yeah. Any objections?
Well, I mean, I think it makes sense that when they are a natural flow of a process, we highlight them because in that way, they're not artificial or imposed. But they should, we should be doing business out of that philosophy from those board goals. Like we said, every time we review policy, we're going to look with the diversity lens. And so, you know, we're not imposing that, but we're just kind of doing business influenced by how, you know, the goals that we've approved are. So I think if there's a natural outflow of it, we don't have to wait till quarterly. We can just...
No, I think that absolutely makes sense. I just think what I heard today were kind of standalone, by the way, here's a communications update, right? Which...
Right, and that's all I've just...
Yeah, no, I think that that's logical. It makes sense if it incorporates into something else.
Yeah, to not swelch it and wait for the quarterly report, just if there's a natural outflow. If there's been an action on the item, it'd be updated.
Does it need to go under old business or discussion information items? So if we'll ever be voting necessarily.
There's nothing to vote on, right?
No, it's just...
An update. It's an update, so it can be a discussion item.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
It's just holding us accountable that we've approved these.
It's just a standing item that's on the agenda. If there's something to report on, that's what we'll report on.
Right, it's just holding us accountable that we approved that. We said we were going to strive to meet these goals, and so...
Right, this is going to, an update on what's occurred.
Are you looking for us to update that chart and just have that as a standing document or no, just being able to report in one place?
I'm agnostic. I think whatever makes sense. I think as information keeps developing, that chart is probably not the ideal template.
Right, because they're not going to be able to fit everything in.
I just think having it in sort of one spot to keep track of, you know, we've made great progress on this goal, but this goal perhaps hasn't had as much attention. Why not? What questions does the board need to be asking? And my other item was, as a reminder to everyone, IASB resolutions are coming up in the near future. I thought they had said they were getting sent today. But we will have those for review at probably an October meeting. For triple I, right, the resolutions to review. So that would be a...
Bummer.
Well, that will be a new business item of the next agenda. We don't need to discuss it at this point. We don't have any, were there any other discussion items from anyone? I didn't see anyone suggest anything. Life safety items, I don't believe we have anything this evening.
No update.
And then proposed course fee change under new business, first read.
Dr. Freitas?
If you could tell me what page you're on in the book, too, that would be helpful.
Fifty-two is the chart.
Oh, thank you, sir.
So as you can see, on page, board page fifty-two, I look at it in a different view. You will see the proposed decreases of course fees for the following year and the proposed increases for the following school year. And if you look at the rationale, basically, right, things have become more expensive. You know, so if you look at under the proposed increases, right, you know, food prices are continuing to increase, the cost of consumables have increased. So of course, we have to increase, you know, our fees. And in the decreases, if you look at rationale, there've been some courses that have eliminated some materials, and that's why there's a decrease. You know, for example, business communication eliminated binders and sheet protectors. So that's, you know, ten dollars less there. So some fees have increased because consumables have increased, and other courses have kind of consolidated the resources, and there's a decrease there.
But these are reasonable.
Yeah.
The increases, most of them are a dollar or two.
Yeah.
It's really the food classes that are going up the most, and that's to be expected in some ways.
Does the board want to see this on a second read or does the board want to put this on a consent agenda for October?
I'm comfortable with a consent, putting it on consent for...
I'm comfortable with that also.
No objections.
Okay, Mariana. Then we've moved that to the consent agenda for October.
And curriculum guide, there were no changes there?
There was a question submitted about if you can explain the small section in science and small section in social studies. So these are self-contained special education courses. And from my knowledge, the special education department has always had the ability to run small sections of courses if students IEPs are warranted. This wouldn't be a new course or a course that families can choose, but it'll be a determination based on the IP and the team's recommendation.
So it doesn't require anything in the curriculum guide?
No, it doesn't require anything.
Okay, that was my question. I wanted to make sure we were tying those two things together.
No, that's more than fair.
Okay. And that was a first read as well on the curriculum guide, or we just don't need to take action at all?
No action.
Okay.
It's a standing agenda item that we do each month or this month.
And then moving on to the memorandum of understanding with DLA.
Dr. Smetana?
So DLA Architects has worked with RB since 2013 in completing life safety and capital improvement projects. The attached memorandum of understanding would allow DLA Architects to serve as the district's architect for the replacement of the two air handling units that we presented, that life safety work to the district, to the board already, as well as the bonds that we're purchasing. After approving the MOU, the DLA would be able to work with the district to design the work, purchase the train units, ideally through a purchasing cooperative, and then got to bid for the installation. The fee listed below, the nine and a half percent, is consistent with past projects of this size, both the pool handling units and the most recent roof project as well. There currently is a thirty-six-week lead time for equipment, specifically the air handling units that we need. So I just learned that last week. So while this is a first read, if the board is comfortable, it would be helpful to get this approved tonight. So DLA Architect could start the work. We're keeping our fingers crossed that hopefully that time delay will decrease a little bit because we are ahead of several other schools. Usually this process really ramps up in January. So we are optimistic that hopefully it won't be thirty-six weeks, but that currently is the lead time for the equipment that we're looking to purchase.
So they would be done, if it stands now, that would be summer work?
It'd be done right at the end of summer, right, when we're coming back and we need those air conditioning units. So I do think this puts a level of urgency on the board to consider approving this tonight. Secondly, I asked Kristen to pull the last two projects that DLA did, similar in dollar amounts, so that we can see the nine and a half percent is consistent with what we paid them in the past two projects. I think we've had a strong relationship with DLA and Carrie Matlock, our architects. So again, I know we like to see things twice, and I'm comfortable if we have to do that. We can wait another two weeks. But I think with a thirty-six-week lead time and we're working on air conditioning units right through summer, we might want to, if possible.
All of the language we've seen by our attorney were in terms of that agreement.
It's the same language that we've used in the past.
I assumed, but that was any question?
So any objections to doing this for approval tonight?
I have none.
Then I think we can move forward.
Mariana, will you take this to a roll call vote, please? Well, you need a motion, please.
I will read the resolution. The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves the memorandum of understanding between Riverside Brookfield High School and DLA Architects Limited as presented in the September twenty-seventh, 2022 board agenda packet.
Second.
Move the second for Mr. Welch. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskow?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Stabler?
Yes. Moving on, I don't see anyone here for visitor's statement, second opportunity. We have no discussion items requested this evening. Any consideration of items for future meetings? I think I probably took my issues out of order earlier. Anything?
And that can be mailed to you. Doesn't have to be at the meeting.
Correct. It's always an interesting placeholder on the agenda, but yeah, agreed. We will certainly have to consider organizational matters at our next meeting with Mona's departure. So matters for closed session, appointment, employment, excuse me, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
I just want to say you predicted prior to the meeting it would be an hour, and it's been an hour and one minute. So it's impressive, as well as all of Kristen's math that she always does on a regular basis, so...
For the final time?
For the final time, yes. Okay, last time I'll be reading a resolution. Well, after a closed session I will too. But the Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the September twenty-seventh, 2022 board agenda packet.
Second for the last time on camera.
All, and we do need a roll call to close, please.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskow?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Stabler?
Yes. So it is eight oh two.